I actually lost his father on Saturday. So we're talking to him to make sure that my first one is House. Real quick, I'll return this over to Jessica, but what I'd like to say in the preface is that it's one thing that I like about this budget and each year it gets easier and easier is that the employees recruitment as well and employees spending, uh, ten million was addressed in this budget. Definitely so, here with the forty three, he will give us a house present now that address. Supervising the staff, they work hand in hand with finance to make sure that they understand that they're really need personal law and I factor for that because they work hand in hand with some of the people. And the other thing that I see I be in our equipment, capital group equipment process continues to work. We're not, it's not only something that just we're doing, we're actually running that five years and every year refreshing that. And I really thank that. And I really thank how Jessica's been leading this very well and everybody's home what needs to be done. So I just want to say that before I turn it over to Jessica.
Hey, presenting the fiscal year two thousand twenty five city management's proposed budget. Our general is revenue and expenditure trends, the fiscal year two thousand twenty five budget considerations, the fiscal year two thousand twenty five budget overview and the next steps. Our general fund trends, we have general fund revenues. If you're looking at the jump from fiscal twenty one to twenty two, that was growth in sales tax of three point six million. And then the jump from twenty two to twenty three is due to the three point seven million dollars in bond project funds that was transferred from debt service. And we also had a one point one million dollar increase in charges for services with five hundred fifty thousand of it being in garbage income and four hundred sixty seven thousand of it was in public safety. We had a four hundred sixty thousand dollar increase in other revenues was consistent of bank interest income of three hundred eighty thousand dollars. The two thousand twenty four is only about one point two increase. We did decrease the debt service bond projects by three point two million, but there was a two hundred twenty eight thousand dollar increase in business license revenue, a seven hundred thousand dollar increase in bank interest income, and we had two hundred forty seven thousand dollar increase in the recognized opioid fund revenue. In two thousand twenty five proposal, we're going to decrease the debt service bond projects by two point four million. We have one point four, one point five million in debt bond projects that we are proposing this year.
That's the explanation to me, decreasing the debt service by two point four.
The amount is going to come from the bond money that we transferred to general fund and general fund to pay out to capital projects is going to down, it's going to continue to do all those projects.
Okay, why are we lower then on our revenues? Because we're taking that out, is that?
Right, you have to run the revenue through general fund and pay it back out to capital projects. But the projects keep dropping off, so the amount we're having transferring to revenue and transfer back out is dropping lower.
Okay.
So once we run all these files through, does it produce that around forty six?
No, we had forty nine, about forty nine without the debt service. The sales tax revenues, again, we had that increase of three point six from twenty one to twenty two and it's been going steady around twenty nine million for the last three years.
Our business license numbers you referenced in twenty three and twenty four both increased to the tune of about seven hundred thousand dollars total, is that what I heard you said?
We had two hundred twenty eight in twenty four and I don't think I reported any in twenty three. So it's just twenty, two thousand twenty four, it increased by two hundred twenty eight thousand.
I thought you said that we had anything increase somewhere else too.
No, just garbage income, public safety and bank interest in the year before.
Okay, bank interest, that interest.
If I'm not wrong, I know that's, we do a market sweep over now.
Our business license increase, should our sales tax increase too, or are those businesses that are not generating sales tax? If we track that anyway and see?
We can, in our request.
If that is, if it's legitimate for us to consider, I mean, it's safe to consider a flat uh, sales tax in a budget standpoint, but just out of my curiosity, uh, I, if we increase by two hundred and twenty five thousand, two hundred twenty eight thousand in business licenses, logically speaking, either businesses are making more money because that business license is based on the revenue produced or we're getting new businesses in, and in either case, we should be generating more sales tax revenue too, right?
Not always, all of them aren't paying sales tax.
Right, right, like I'm professional, so my, my fee, my professional office doesn't necessarily pay sales tax, but my business license goes up, it might do it better. So I understand that, and that's the reason I'm asking, can we look at that and see of that increase, how much of it came from businesses that are generating sales tax and how much of it came from businesses that don't generate sales tax?
Yes.
And what I would see, when a business was not, the sustainability of the businesses that, say, too difficult are, a big deal is called under, you know what I'm saying, this, this is a, over three year period of new businesses and company. I mean, those are still new business, you know what I'm saying?
We can run a report, but I don't do that.
I understand, I would do that, I would just figure that out.
General fund expenditures. In two thousand twenty three, there's going to be a three point four million dollar increase in capital projects. There was a five hundred thousand dollar increase in economic incentives, so that's the tax payouts, four hundred thousand dollar increase in debt payments. We had a, um, the Anderson Express took the year off to where we did not pay out three hundred forty thousand dollars, so that went back up in two thousand twenty three, we paid that out. There was a five hundred thousand dollar increase in insurance costs, four hundred seventy thousand dollar increase in the garbage collection expense when we signed the new contract, and there was a three hundred and forty five thousand dollar increase in payroll expenses. We had two hundred four thousand recorded in complicated confiscated funds that we had to record as revenue that year, and we also had, um, increase in our board of education flow through funding. So all of those expenses were increased in twenty three. In two thousand twenty four, there was a seven hundred thousand dollar decrease from those confiscated funds. Um, we had a huge significant increase in auto note refairs and street department and the garbage collections, the expense went down. In two thousand twenty five, we proposed a total of four point eight million dollar increase in transfers out, including four hundred twenty thousand dollars in debt expense and four point three billion dollars to capital projects and other funds.
Where is the offsetting funds? We got revenues of fifty one million four listed and we've got expenditures of fifty seven point four. Where is the six million coming from?
It's the five point, now we had reported appropriations that was approved with, um, city hall and the chief of downtown trail.
It's what we've already done.
We haven't let you, it will start pulling from appropriations right now, it's coming from the rescue act funds and bond.
But that will pull, that's the reserve money.
Correct.
That's already been approved by council.
Right, okay.
And like you said, keep in mind, some of that has been decreased because again, we're the downtown trail, that's the, that's stopped increasing and we, we hopefully maybe decrease a little.
The general fund personnel related expenditures. We propose an increase of four temporary part times to thirty hour part time, a decrease of fourteen full time employees. There was one, um, position lost in, because we promoted in housing, of the court clerk, and then we're proposing staff cuts of seven positions in police and six positions in fire to accommodate salary increases and for competitive advantage to surrounding areas. General fund salaries in two thousand twenty five.
What are the four part time increases?
Say that again.
What are the four part timer increases?
I think, Mr. Frank, can you elaborate on that? I know two are from, is it one or two that's in, um, senior center?
Two.
Two in the senior center, and the other two is full service and defense due to higher activity. We're proposing a two point six million dollar increase compared to the actual budget for two thousand twenty four, but the, um, there's a one point six billion dollar increase compared to the two thousand twenty four adopted budget. So an eight point seven percent proposal in increasing salaries. We're proposing a COLA and merit raise for all eligible general pay scale employees and we're going to increase wages in police and fire for competitive phases around areas.
I, for police and fire, that increase is really the factor of a reduction in the workforce there, correct? So it doesn't really change their line of number?
It does, and the only change is that because, um, their decrease that we compare it to is in other areas. Like insurance should go down there, um, I think retirement's going to stay the same because if you adjust the amount, it's based on that amount. So it was, um, uniforms that will go down in that area. We considered the things we're paying out for each officer, but it could come from other areas. So you'll see the salaries go up, but you'll see it decrease on other lines.
It's a net?
Yes, yeah.
Net wash, yeah, I get, no, I mean, I know that's what we talked about and, and I'm both appreciative for fire and PD for, for their willingness to do that and the rec, and recognizing that this is a good solution for us since we're unable to fill the slots anyway. That's a nationwide thing, it's not, it's not local issue, so, um, it seems like an awful large increase though, eight point seven is the COLA we're looking at?
No, we're looking at COLA two point five for general pay scale employees.
Does that cover all of our employees or we got some, I know we got some that are capped, right?
Correct, the COLA cover is covered, the entire pay scale.
Capped, merit is not.
Merit is not.
Okay, but we're proposing both this time.
Correct.
Why, why we're proposing both here?
I did it because two point five percent increase in the entire scale, but I didn't want to give as much as I could within the budget boundaries. So that's probably issue the merit, I didn't want to give the entire pay scale those up and then we have problems in the future with paying out, so I wanted to increase that pay scale by at least two point five percent because that's what we expect, the COLA is four twenty five, but I also, also want to make issue the merit for people who deserve more than the two point five.
And also make sure that we remain competitive with others. Because again, keep in mind, we're at ten years without merit anything. And that's what we're trying to make sure that we stay competitive with Walmart, but right now, we're not even competitive with Walmart and others. So what we're trying to do is catch up on some of the things and stay within the, the, our budget as well.
How do we determine who deserves the merit raise? Is it by performance, is it the supervisor determine, or you determine?
Uh, supervisors determine that, we've had that conversation, merit is just what it says. Merit is not a reward to everyone, merit should be on what you do to do this, that's what merit is. So we've had a conversation and most supervisors operate within that regardless. But there was a time when people were not operating because it's not just meant to, like COLA, we have some people that have been, been nacked up so long, so they don't get anything, so COLA is just to take care of everybody and keep everybody, to try to catch up, keep everybody in pace.
What is the merit increase being considered for the ones that qualify? Is there a percentage jump on that too?
The merit is, is between the scales, but it's around three point one five percent.
So some will get a five point six percent raise potentially?
Retirement expenditures. P and L continue to increase in the quarter funding due to a big hit that was taken in two thousand twenty two and it will be squared over the next few years. The general liability increased by thirty three thousand, the workers compensation is increasing by two hundred six thousand, health insurance thirty three thousand and the city's contributions two hundred and five thousand.
Help me understand the line a little bit. The line is the level that the city is paying and everything above the line is what the employee is paying?
Correct.
Component?
The blue is the health insurance, but the city's contribution is the purple part, so yes, the difference would be what the employee is paying.
What's above the line is what our employees are paying. If we're going to propose, I'm going to throw this out there just for thoughts, if we're going to propose COLA and merit increase, should we not also consider an increase in, um, contribution from our employees towards their health insurance? That is eighty five percent of their health insurance costs recovered by the city. They're paying about fifteen percent of that cost. I, I don't know the answer to that, I'm just putting that out there for us to think about. I, I'm not looking for the answer today either, I just, it was a thought that I had when I went through this, it's like, well, we?
So I know we recently just did health insurance increase and I don't know what that was and I can't remember off the top of my head how much that increased for the employees, um.
I know that's not popular, I mean.
A five point six increase is?
Pretty healthy salary increase.
Yeah, it is.
Obviously.
Yeah, it's all paying out. I think it's just something to think about.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's something to consider, I don't know, it's a, it's an answer, not to, but I'm just figuring there.
Okay, our budget, budget considerations with the possibly limited adjustment and merit increases for eligible general employees, our fund balance policy, the public safety pay increase for competitive advantage and capital outlets. This is our general fund budget overview in all the departments. Again, this is just a summary of our general fund revenue sources that we've already discussed with the two thousand twenty five proposed budget at fifty one point five million.
That slide numbers, page four listed at fifty five, fifty one point four billion, we got them all.
You listed at fifty one point four?
Slide one, page four. Yeah, you listed.
It has to be the round here.
Well, you said five point nine was the difference in before and that's what matches out with that fifty seven point four, so that makes sense, let's make sure our numbers match.
Okay. The proposed general fund revenues by source and percentages to taxes are at sixty seven point four percent. General fund expenditures by function, and this is a summary of those.
Everything but outside agencies increase.
That's correct.
Is that largely the salaries or is there something else?
Definitely the salaries. Most of it, nothing changed except the salaries. We kept almost everything the same unless there was any needed change, but mostly we stayed the same except the salaries.
So, what, this is a change in community relations?
Community relations?
Yes.
It's, um, hard and I think it's?
Food service, cleaning and economic, it's, it's a few of the like.
All excluded, go for this, this thing like, uh, safety, general fund, all?
I asked that same question, Dee Dee, I want to go back to slide, page thirteen, and if, yes, everything that's underneath that. We had, the transfers out is largely capital outlet, right?
Yes.
So we're about four point five five higher from what we actual versus what we're proposing in this budget?
Correct.
The rest of it, uh, so we're right at, we're right at three then with the other, with the salary increases.
Correct. But it looks, what was it, two point six?
One is three hundred and ten.
And we're looking from the two thousand twenty four actual, right?
I'm looking at the actual versus?
Yeah, it's going to be higher because salaries are going to decrease because of shortages.
Yeah, from the budget, it's different, but I'm looking at the actual.
Right, right. With short staff, we pay out lower with actual, then it's going to jump high because we go back to what should be proposed for all salaries. So I think it is about two point six million.
I get more than that with my math, but, but I'm not counting the savings from outside agencies, but this is not very much, there's about a hundred forty thousand, a hundred forty three thousand.
To look at this close, we do have to look at the detail of each department versus their actual compared to their proposed.
We'll put it this way, what was the question, Council Jane, that you'd be asking me?
It's not so much of a question, it's just kind of a clarification, I'm just trying to understand. I guess the reason I'm asking my math is not adding up, but maybe I'm, I'm sure I'm missing something, but I've got us at three hundred and ten, higher in general government, like one point two one in public safety, right at eight fifty, eight forty five in public works, right at six hundred and eight in community relations, down one forty five in outside agencies and I'm up four point five five in transfers out if you add all those up. It's closer to seven, eight than six million, I guess, is why I'm trying to, why I'm struggling.
Which it is a seven point four million total increase from the action.
Yeah, and it's there, but, okay, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to answer.
Look at that?
Yes.
Expenditures by function, the public safety being the highest at thirty one percent and transfers out at twenty four percent. The highlights of the other funds. This is the museum operations fund, they will be going into the fund balance for capital projects of nine thousand five hundred on Museum of National History, the two hundred thousand dollars for HVAC in Birmingham, fifty thousand seventy two in Longley, and they will come out even with the museum store.
We've got three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in expense of revenue with the museum?
Yes, sir, and they have it in fund balance.
It's in their fund balance.
Correct.
I know this stuff's necessary, so I'm not questioning, but they, you know, just making sure we got it spent.
Yes, sir. Internal service funds. We have eight hundred seventy five thousand in revenues and expenditures in liability insurance, three point nine million in health insurance and two hundred thirty two point five in workers compensation proposed for two thousand twenty five.
Why is the workers comp proposed budget more than half of what we spent in the past year?
We paid out?
I know that's a hit or miss kind of thing.
We paid out two, I think, insurance funds that were over two hundred thousand.
We're proposing a budget that's lower than twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four? Well, that line, I, it, we're proposing a budget there, an expense there of less than, than, than we paid out in the last five years.
But we've been paying on those plans that we cleared out over the last time.
Okay, so we cleared out a bunch of plans and?
That was driving.
Okay, we don't have anything set pending and?
I don't think so, not with the past, I think now it's just current plans that come through and they're small amounts, but we need, um, allocate all of those based on the current amount that they went through, but we need to settle a lot of cases over there.
That doesn't understand, thanks.
The store award fund, we have four hundred thirty two thousand dollars in income and expense.
Can you tell us what those projects are? Is it defined in the book?
No, no, sir, they aren't, they aren't, sorry. But we never define which projects, it's just they spend out if they hit those projects.
Before we spend, we want to make sure to get that, fit that criteria. I don't think that we're looking at this coming up as something, if we ask for, fit that criteria is something that actually will take care of our way of the life frame and the fit that category, so those are the things that we're going to try to find or get with it. But we just try to make sure that funding before it's that, that it got, you, someone's that we could have used before, but we want to make sure that before we spend, and then if it fits within that criteria, we can use all of them as well.
I understand that, sometimes we also have, um, unknowns, I think back to, we were rather, where the pipe collapsed and we, we, you know, started. and we, we, you know, a store pipe under the road collapsed and we had to dig that up and this was a excuse for some of that, uh. I know, uh. I know we have more needs there than that fund generates revenue for. That is the reason, I guess, I asked, would we target, do we have a target of anything or we just kind of setting that money aside? Well, the thing we've done in previous years, it is in fact, hey, we don't have any specific projects that we saw that we need, we're gonna set this money aside so we can tackle something bigger than we know is coming down the road in a little bit.
That's what we've done in the past, why right now we're taking a approach as, say, if something comes up next year and they have a project, they got a project fund and that fits into our stall, we can use that instead of using the project fund. In the past, we used a lot of project fund, but we didn't use the stall or appropriately in the past, but now we're trying to do that with some type of plan and keeping that there so we make sure it fits that plan and we need it to be, because we have a projects fund within public works sometime and that's what you, as you were saying, when we had it on the road, we should use the project fund or we shouldn't use the stall. So that's what we're trying, so there's a plan now talking about it, we're talking about quite clearly between finance and self day. If there's something that can fit in there, we're trying to do have a plan, even if capital group is something that fits, we're gonna use it, but we don't want to use everything else, talk everything else or just if something else comes up, okay, yes, sir.
We also pretty have one, have a pretty good fund now with T T on stall board because we don't have huge projects coming out. The fire tax fund, we have one point five million in income and we want to go into their fund balance for two hundred and eighty-four thousand for capital projects.
On all of these uh specialized funds, where we're going into their fund balance, is there something in one of these that shows us what remains of the fund balance? Is it in the bigger, in the deeper dive document?
No, sir, we don't, we don't.
I'd like to see where we're going with those things, just so we're being uh physically responsible and making sure we're not draining a fund balance uh waiting against the need.
But fire and we can't are not, should not obtain a fund. They should use their funds and if not, they are supposed to report it back to their, I think it's the county if they don't use. So we try to make sure we use it if available.
Understand.
And what we do, those conversations that I had in the time that found out, the directors are made aware of that and they know how to manage that way. So we don't do anything about the director being in place and that's why we did understand the fund balance, that we understand the fire department has been in a portion because they have a lease payment on the truck. So when those things are talked to the department before she makes those decisions, the department is made aware of those as well.
The fire training fund has a um proposed revenue to one hundred ten thousand in expense also. The gas tax funds that are restricted from streets, roads and bridges will be transferred in the amount fifty-eight point five into four five cent, one hundred seventy-eight point five on rebuild Alabama and sixty-eight thousand in the seven cent tax. These funds have already been transferred and appropriated for projects that are restricted to streets, roads and bridges and street expenses. In the capital outline, we have vehicles for a total eight hundred and one point eight thousand, machinery and equipment sixty-five thousand, projects totaling nine hundred and ninety-three thousand that include Main Street, Quintard landscaping, paving projects and store. We also have airport, airport improvements proposed at one hundred ninety-two thousand. The Chief of Dollar Trail park improvements at two point four million and facility improvements at three point seven million, which includes City Hall, Fire Station Five, the Museum H VAC, Longleaf parking lot and then Technology and thirty thousand with the upgrades of computers in here.
Can we just break down uh the vehicles where they're going?
Yes, sir, you should say.
Can you even tell it, it's in this?
Yeah, it's the last part.
Is that the same for the projects, the Main Street, Quintard, H V?
Yes, sir, all of us listed out in here.
The other ones kind of tell themselves, but.
Our next steps are today here in our budget workshop. We're going to have our initial public hearing now on September third, or changes were made, are to be made. We'll have a second public hearing on September seventeenth. And September twenty-second is the last day to adopt the budget. Any questions or comments?
Leave that.
I have a couple of questions for our video then to be more. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Can you send me the the last page of the email box? The the capital. Because I can't use that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just really small, just so I can.
If you look at the page front, it gives you a little easier reading.
Do you have any other more questions for staff, colleagues?